Okay. I see we have Bill and Andrew. Welcome. I'm Barbara Henry. I'm the first selectman here. We have Jim Conway, one of our selectmen, Russ Dorenzo, one of our selectmen, Julie Katie is our terrific clerk. We're just going to go through a couple of things first and then you're first on our business agenda, if you don't mind, okay?
Not a problem.
All right, so we have. First of all, I do want to wish a happy Rosh Hashanah to all those who do celebrate. And I don't know if we saw that when we scheduled this meeting, but it's a little late now. All right, I need the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 2nd.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Second. Any questions, comments? Nothing? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The tax collectors report, I did send you all the, you could just scroll down from the packet that I sent to you.
Yep.
And I need approval of those.
I'll make a motion to approve those tax credits, whatever you call them.
Refunds.
Refunds. I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the nine people listed.
Oh, second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just want to remind you that there is a vaccine clinic on the ninth. It's at the senior center for anybody. There's no appointments, just people can go and show up. So we have no idea who's going to do it, but Griffin Hospital is putting that on for us. And it is not the booster, but it is the just regular vaccine. Okay. I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped here big time. And we have, I don't know if we have any communications from the public. I don't see any public on except for the people that we've invited here. And they are on the agenda. So we have the commission and board appointments. And I thought that we had appointed Lynn Humberg to the board on the library, but it was not in our last minutes. Jimmy picked up on that. Didn't we do that in August? I thought we did.
I don't recall.
Let me just see. Well, I would like to make sure that we add that to the agenda and it is to fill a vacancy on the board of directors of this minor memorial library. I have a motion to add that to the agenda.
So moved.
And then to appoint Lynn Humberg to that position because, and we need to do that because she's going to be on the ballot.
Right. I'll make a motion to appoint Linda Humberg to the minor memorial library board.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I don't have anybody for the council on aging. Those two positions, there are two people that Sue Stopaker is invited to their next meeting. I don't have anyone for zoning alternate unless Jim, you have somebody like to recommend?
Not, I haven't heard from anybody come forward as of yet. If anybody does come forward, they're welcome to our meeting. It's going to be September 20th this month.
Okay.
Welcome to join us.
You know, I will, I will definitely offer something out there. And, okay, so I make a motion to table A through C on this agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then for ZBA alternate, the vacancy expiring in 2024, Jim Kelly. And there we have a couple of Jim Kellys in town. This gentleman lives on Tofit Road. Old Tofit. So can I get a motion to appoint him?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our first item under business is a solar project presentation with Santa Energy.
How are you guys? I just want to introduce, I'm Bill. That's Andrew, who you see on the other screen. So we, I work with, well, we both work with Santa Energy and we're an 80-year-old company. We've been producing energy for the state of Connecticut, all the way up to Maine and into parts of New York for over 80 years. We've been in the energy game for quite some time and we put our toes a little while back into this, into the solar industry and have found, obviously we have to with fossil fuels becoming prehistoric, no pun intended. We have to step into this new realm of energy being produced, renewable. And that's what we've done. So I spoke with Lorenzo who showed an interest. Actually, I think Barbara, we spoke at first and you forwarded me over to Lorenzo and
Right.
So we got the ball rolling down the hill. Lorenzo gave me a lot of details regarding your brownfield space up there. And you know, the capped landfill that you guys have?
Yep.
And we, we went up there. I took a nice tour. I walked your woods and actually became pretty, pretty familiar with the area, not to mention your bear population up there. Quite, quite a few of them. But yes, so I walked the whole property. Andrew and I worked together on projects all over the place, from Connecticut up to Maine, as well as Andrew has a background all the way down to Puerto Rico, restoring the grid down there. So we are not people who are new to this game. We are people that were brought in to make sure it was done right. And we happened to talk with Lorenzo and we got it to this next phase. Now, because we're working on, and you can see behind Andrew, that's actually one of our brownfields that was done in a town actually up in New Hampshire. We are not, you know, this is, this is nothing new for us. We specialize in these sorts of projects. The larger, the better. And our goal was to really get your town running green. And we've created some ideas and kind of some concepts that we want to go through with you guys and see if you guys have the interest. Now, at this point, I'm actually going to pass this on to Andrew because Andrew is the absolute guru of solar. You can look them up online and it's nothing but praises. So I'm going to pass this to Andrew at this point and let you guys know where our findings are. And I'm going to mute just because I have a couple of dogs here that tend to bark at every neighbor that walks by.
Thanks, Bill. And thank you to the, to the select board this evening for having us just to share a little bit of our experience. As Bill had stated, this project that you're seeing behind my screen was the first landfill project ever developed in New Hampshire. It was in the town of Milton. And as you can see, the background has a beautiful, you know, lake in the background. You can, it's hard to see, but there is a ball field in the background as well. So where, nothing is, these, these type of sensitive sites are nothing new to us. We went on to do a second town project, a couple of towns over in Hillsborough, New Hampshire, which was the second landfill project ever developed and built in New Hampshire. And then we went on to develop more and continue to do these type of projects. So when Bill brought forward to me some of the details between his conversation with you, Barbara, and then with Lorenzo, you know, it's, it's right up our alley. It's the type of projects that we love to do. You know, what we're able to do for communities that we've worked with, this one in particular, this is a smaller community. They had about a $30,000 a year electric bill with just their town buildings, not including the school. And this project here was able to reduce that $30,000 a year electric bill down to about $10,000. It's been up and running for well over five years now. So the town has enjoyed the benefits of those savings. And they will for the next 15 years. But these projects are meant to be long-term projects utilizing pieces of land that have really no value to a town or a community. Their, their chairman of their select board came to me after reading some information about me in the news and asked if we could, you know, do something like this because they were never going to lease land to themselves. They were never going to tax themselves and they didn't have the ability to float a bond or wasn't interested in floating a bond to own the property because the return on these projects would be, you know, 15, 20 years for a town not having any tax appetite like a private industry or private business might. So we took it upon ourselves to do some homework, do some research. And what we really wanted to do tonight is just provide some of that intel and just give you just some guidance on what these type of projects could look like for a small town like yourselves. And then from there, look for your guidance to understand how you'd like to proceed. If this is something the town sees as a value add, there's a lot more to it. I will, I will share that, you know, conceptually, we always look to towns and if there's land that is underutilized or if there's rooftops that are underutilized. In some cases, as markets evolve, sometimes there's an opportunity to even use parking lots as a canopy with solar on top of them. So there's lots of different ideas that we bring the experience to the table. We really wanted to become a partner with your town and show you what we've done in other communities and go from there. So what we really looked at was the area around your brownfield site itself. And I won't go into too many details of our evaluation initially, but what we realized is that there's land around it that made sense. And there is a current program in Connecticut that is evolving into a kind of a version 2.0 that is allowing for projects up to about 10 acres of land, just in context for you. Two megawatts is the size limitation. And from our initial site walk that Bill did for me and some of the analysis that we did, there was room for it and it would become a new source of revenue for the town. Almost making the town the landlord in essence. And it creates a new source of revenue that the town can utilize for other benefits to the community. We've seen some of our towns use some of those monies to do some infrastructure upgrades or they did use some of the cash to float an infrastructure bond to be able to do some work around their community in different ways. So a lot of different creative options that you can look at. But what we really spelled out here in this kind of high level summary of options was that there is a chance for the town to lease that land to a project owner like ourselves. There's an opportunity for the town to save money on their electric bill by way of a discount. And these, these amounts based on our initial review were, you know, upwards of, you know, $50,000 a year worth of benefit to, to your community. So one of the important things that we wanted to touch on was the sensitivity of these projects. You know, we, we take a lot of care in how to cite these projects, what we can do because there are trees that are going to be cut down. But what we like to do is like to integrate our projects into the local habitat. We've started to do a lot of work with pollinators to bring into, even though we're changing the habitat, we're allowing a new habitat to grow and kind of co-mingle with these energy projects. So that's a big piece of some of the development work that we do when we're, when we're developing projects on the ground.
Now, Andrew, I'm just going to chime in for one second. Part of my background is I've actually worked with a lot of the wetlands communities throughout Connecticut in building gardens, doing things like this. Whenever there was such a thing as removing a tree, we would always go back to the people through wetlands or whoever and pick the plants that are native to the area and work with them. So one of our biggest things that Andrew and I kind of combat with is making sure this is right for the area and also right for the nature around it because it's a very big thing. So I love when he brings up the pollinators. That's very big to us. And I've, I've had a lot of experience with many of those types of gardens. And this is one of those situations where this could be a really good play into what Andrew's going to explain next.
You got it. So one other detail that is valuable to the community and something that sometimes gets lost in translation when these solar projects come to different communities is some of the infrastructure upgrades that take place. I think we all are recognizing, especially in light of what happened in, you know, down south with the recent hurricane, we really understand it more, even though it isn't impacting our direct, you know, necessarily, some of the effects of it has affected Connecticut and New York and New Jersey. Our infrastructure is, is pretty, is aging, plain and simple. And one of the benefits of these projects is whenever there's any upgrades required of any of the telephone lines or the poles or any of the equipment that goes back to the, the infrastructure, the substations, the lines, those are born out of these projects. These are costs that we absorb. So the community would benefit. Again, it's not a huge area, but it's a pretty decent distance from this location to where the power lines could support a project like this. Those upgrades are going to benefit the people in that part of the community, not to mention having, it's your own project in your town that's adding value to the infrastructure and resilience. And one really important thing I'll just touch on as far as the resilience piece is that Connecticut is just going through, like I said, their version 2.0 of this older program. But in addition, there's been some, some recent advancements in the solar storage portion of the legislature. And now Connecticut is, I think, the ninth, eighth or ninth state to join some of the other states where they're, they've set some pretty lofty storage goals, which creates some more of that resilience in your community. So that's brand new. We just learned, are learning about it in real time over the last couple of weeks. And I think the point we wanted to bring to the town was that as these programs become more clear and understanding how they could benefit your community, if there's areas of the town that don't have any type of backup energy resources, or if there's a need to enhance them, this, this program is going to allow for more towns and businesses and schools and, you know, assisted living facilities to have some of these infrastructure resources that can benefit the town from a resilience perspective.
Absolutely. And, and Andrew, I think it's important to explain, when we speak about the infrastructure and things like that, you guys up in your area, I, I work with the town of Sherman. I've been working with Don Low over there up at Happy Acre Farms and a few other places. And the big issue up with you guys is your power lines are set in the past. I mean, they're just old lines. They don't carry, even if somebody wanted to power, say, their farm right now, they couldn't do it with solar. Your power lines just won't handle it. So part of the things that we look, look at is we like to come into a community and leave it better than we are. And one of those things that we do is actually upgrading power lines in order to create this power. And speaking about the energy and the savings and the batteries and the backup, you know, it's, now we're taking on generators and we're saying, okay, I'm sure all of you have heard of Tesla batteries, things like that, the, the cells that they have. We basically are looking to come in and one of the joys is, you know, everyone always says, okay, winter comes around, what are we going to do? There's no, they've got snow on the panels. Well, these batteries can always be fed off of the line, but these lines have to be updated in order to get to these, these steps. So you can sit there and trickle feel, fill your batteries or your slash generator. But with this, with these updates, you're actually going to be able to load these batteries up and utilize them for what they're for, rather than saying, boy, I hope we have enough power on these things. So that's one of the things, we want to come in and update you guys, bring you guys to the next level. Unfortunately, this isn't something UI or ever source or anything does. They always point the finger and go, oh, you want power, you do it. And you know what? We finally said, we actually work close with the state of Connecticut as well. So we said, you know, we'll take this on. Being an 80-year company, we've got the background to do it. We've been doing these sorts of things for many, many years. So that's one of the big perks that we're looking to get with you guys is to get you guys running on renewable energy, storing that renewable energy and being able to produce that renewable energy through the power lines. And that would all fall into our, our program.
Yep. Great. And one last final thing, I think, to touch on, and then we can open up for if there's any questions from the board. Another benefit that we like to talk about, and my first project I ever did over 10 years ago was at a school. And part of the, the initiative there was to incorporate some of this work into the curriculum. And what we could do, you know, depending on the interest at the school level, if it's at the lower elementary levels, all the way up to the high school levels, if there's an interest from any of the teachers to integrate this into their curriculum, if it's science, if it's math, if it's environmental studies, you're now going to have, you potentially now could have your own projects in your community. You know, this information is all, these systems are all electrically and connected to the internet. So there's access to be able to get the information, understand what's going on with production. So we've seen, we've done some pretty creative things over the years on ways to incorporate that into the different levels of curriculum, you know, from the lowest levels all the way to the highest level. So we didn't want that to be lost in, in this conversation either, that there are other benefits besides the obvious things that Bill and I are talking about tonight. And again, that's what we were hoping for was the opportunity to, you know, get the blessing of, of the board to move some type, some part of this relationship forward, understand what the, what the preferred path would be for, for the town. And we would follow that path. If it's a, if it's an RFP process, if it's a kind of a process of checking our references and working with us, we welcome either option. We're very happy to do that. We're very comfortable in both, both environments. But we just wanted to know that this was a chance for us to show you a few different ideas. And then again, if we were the right company to work with your community, then we'd have the opportunity to really dig in and see where we can maximize the value for the town. So we kind of put a bookend on that and let's see if there's any questions you might have for Bill or I.
So, okay, so it's saying it's creating a new source of revenue.
Yeah.
So on top of, of savings, we're going to look at a new source of revenue for the towns because of the energy that we're producing for this small town.
Andrew, do you mind if I field that one? Yeah. So basically here's, I'm going to give you a kind of conceptual. So you have, how many, how many homes in, in your area in Roxbury that are filing for permits? So say there's 10 of them. Say they're $5,000 each in taxes that you guys are going to receive. We basically are offering that same $50,000. The big difference with us, there's not three children and that are moving into that home that are going to be going to the schools, doing this, doing that, which chew up that revenue for you guys instantly. With this, it's basically putting money in the pocket. We're going to put it out there. It's going into a spot that we're going to keep hidden. Not too many people travel past there back by the, by the dump sites that you guys have back there. And we're basically going to come in and create this $50,000 for you guys that you guys are going to receive every single year. And I mean, the totals over 25 years are, are pretty incredible. Not to mention, like Andrew mentioned, with the, with the lessons that at school and things like that, these are all, all things that we can do. But the big thing is, is this is something with a zero overhead. Now granted, I know you do have overhead and you can use these things towards other things all the time, whether it be a streets, whether it be anything, anything you guys have to do. But this is one of those situations where you can have 10 of people's homes where, you know, all the children have to go to the schools and let's say it's 5,000, 10,000, 12,000, maybe 20,000 for the kids to go to the school system. You're not getting it with these. So you're actually going to have income coming in from us because of that piece of land versus that land sitting there doing something for nothing, really for a long period of time. Because once you deal with brownfields and this is our education, it's really a dead, dead piece of land. So that's why we go around and speak to towns like this and say, listen, these are, you have capability of things to do with these. You just have to look into them and do the research. And that's where we come in and we work directly for you guys and answer all the questions. Go ahead, Andrew.
I think that's good. I think it speaks Barbara to your question. That is, you become effectively a landlord. You, you own this land. You're not creating any revenue from it, like Bill said. And now you have the opportunity to lease the land for, you know, renewable energy system that can add value to your community, all the things we talked about this evening. So it's really a quite simple kind of value add to the community. And again, like I said, a lot of different towns that we've worked in over the years, they use this revenue for multiple reasons. I mean, it can be, I had one community I worked with that was interested in building up a TIF district and bringing more industry into a part of their town, but they came up short on the revenue to get the infrastructure to open up that district. So, you know, this money was, they were able to float a bond and they were able to, you know, you do some of that infrastructure work to then be able to bring businesses into the community. We had another community we worked with that actually, our project was able to provide some matching funds for a federal EDA grant. And the EDA grant was awarded to this small community and which much their surprise, and they were able to take an old gravel pit and turn it into an industrial park. So now they're welcoming new business into their town by utilizing the solar as kind of the catalyst for the change. So I think that those are just really creative ways that, you know, this type of new business really of coming into your town can add some new, new, unique and creative changes for, for the town.
So.
Guys, guys, this is Russ Dorenzo. First of all, I think you need to vet the town better because I don't think you understand who we are. We don't have brownfields here. I myself am, am an environmental consultant who do a lot of solar on large landfill sites. We don't have a large landfill site. And we did, you know, I feel like it's Groundhog Day. We've done this two years ago. We went through all this. The landfill doesn't have a power grid to get the energy out. So that cost of putting that in, put the landfill out of it. We don't have brownfields sites. We don't have empty pieces of land that aren't generating, you know, tax. It's a, it's a town of a lot of land trust land. It's a town of woods. There's, there's no polluted sites. I think what we need to do is vet this. And before we spend hours talking about it, because we've spent hours talking about this.
I understand that.
Find out where, where we could do this in town. We've talked about putting things on the roofs of all the town buildings, blah, blah, blah. We've been through this. So I apologize if I'm a little impatient.
No. Russell, we appreciate it.
We, we had the same, the same spiel, although I understand there's a lot of money out there for solar. I'm all in favor of solar. And I've looked into it for this town and I don't see where it fits because we don't really have a good site. And even if we did put it on all the town buildings, it's not going to be viable for you is what, what it came back.
So, so Russell, I'm so glad you brought up those points and you're, you're right. In most situations there aren't, but we actually have done our due diligence. And Andrew, if you don't mind scrolling down, we've looked into land ownership, things like this. We dove into this. Andrew and I have spent, oh my gosh, it's like we're dating. We've spent a lot of time together doing this. And we've looked at the key locations in order to produce this energy. Number one being, as you can see up at the top, two being the school. Number one being your, I believe that was your town hall. Fire department, if I remember correctly, a couple of the other buildings up there. Number two being your school. We've cited out that whole thing. And then number three, if you can scroll down just a hair more there, Andrew. Number three being, this is that area with the landfill. And like I said, I walked these woods. I'm pretty intimate with the, with this place. And this place is available and it is doable. And we don't see, I mean, all, you can see the orange on the side. That's where your ridges are and things like that. We have figured out how to make this work for you guys. And if you guys ever gave us the opportunity, I think we could show you something different. Now, I do understand there is the potential that you've run into companies that, you know, can't carry their weight for a lack of a better term. The fact of the matter is, we are the weight. We run a lot of this state. You've seen Santa trucks everywhere. There's about three major companies in this area. We're one of them or a family-run business. We've been here for 80 years. We've got the financial backing. We've got the companies that we've partnered up with. We can make these things happen. So this is something we've spent a lot of time on before we even wanted to come to the table to you guys. We wanted to make sure we had everything buttoned up. And right now, we're almost there, but obviously the next step of this is the biggest step and that's the fact finding. That's where we look for fatal flaws. We look for things like that. So you're right, there's a lot more work to be done. But if we're coming from me and from, you know, pretty much anyone who loves solar and it sounds like you do, in order to find out if we can do it, we have to get to that next step. In order to get to that next step.
What's, what's that next step?
That next step is going to be looking into the fatal flaws. We're going to, we would put something together for you guys to show you guys. Listen, this is what we are. This is the timeline. This is, we'll show you everything. We're completely transparent. We have nothing to hide. We're excited.
What do you, what do you need to do that?
Uh, well, we, we can do that.
What I think we should do is give us a plan. I mean, so we're not talking, because last time around, we spun and spun and remember Barbara, it took forever to get to the point where nothing ever happened.
Well, I can.
Wasted a lot of our time.
That was working originally back when the ZREC program came on board.
Yeah.
I mean, I went through a lot of this.
Yep.
Just, but just in our own small town, because you're looking at the high school. I don't know if that's a problem because that's a regional school and you have three towns that, you know, own that basically, well, the school district owns it, but it's, it's the school for the three towns. It's a regional high school. And so I don't know if that throws a wrench into anything. We did look at rooftops. I was really excited about that, but that whole program imploded. And so right when we were going to get going with it. The, and like Russ said, we did look at the, the transfer station. That was another time we looked at it and it was about bringing the three phase from 317 in. And that, that was just cost prohibitive for anyone for the size of this, for the size of this transfer station area, the landfill. And then the last people that we spoke with, And then, the last people that we spoke with, um, it was basically buying into someone's solar farm in another town and that did not, I mean, that's, I I probably would have went for it, I think, but the the savings that we would have realized was like five thousand dollars and I mean, it was just, it was all paperwork, but, uh, but they, the selectmen voted to not move ahead with that. So to to go to the next step,
Yeah.
What you just need that, yes, we'd like to see what your next step is. And I'm, what exactly do you need a vote from us to do what?
Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, so Barbara, can I just, I just want to touch on some of Russell's couple of questions just from a technical perspective, so he understands. And then I want to, and then I'll answer your question absolutely. So Russell, I just wanted to let you know that, um, part of that frustration that it sounds like you have from the past experience was the programs were in like, there was a deadline to Barbara's point, the the ZREC program was, you know, coming to its end and nobody knew what the new program in Connecticut was gonna look like. Um, we, we now know what the new program is looking like. It's, it's evolving. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you we know every detail because we don't. It was only just announced over the summer. And the, the state is putting what I call the playbook together, like what are the, what are the rules and regulations that we have to follow to be able to do these projects? But substitutively, we did our policy research. We understand the program. We, as of like two weeks ago, we understand what the solar storage, uh, program looks like, what the incentives look like, how that kind of benefits any of our customers. Um, but to your point, Russell, we look at these projects from a, from a civil perspective. What are the constraints to the land? We look at the infrastructure. We already knew that the three phase was nineteen hundred feet away. Uh, we priced that into our project based on new program. And with the old ZREC program, um, sunsetting and stepping down, um, depending on what economics, a potential solar company was putting into a project, that, those were constrained. The good news for the, for the town now is that we're starting fresh. It's a brand new program. It's, we're gonna know more and more over the next couple of months here, what the actual real details are, but we know how to structure these projects so they can get done. Again, the project behind me was on a landfill. Um, again, and I just want to, um, just touch on one thing, Russell, that Bill said, we're not saying that this land around your landfill is a brownfield. It may just be a, a, whatever the classification is. I know that's a very, um, sensitive subject. All we're saying is that that land around your landfill is suitable for solar from our initial perspective, from a sidewalk and some of our kind of desktop due diligence. So we have.
And let's, let's see a plan. Let's see a plan. I think that's.
Yep, that's what we have on the screen for you, Russell.
You could try to sell me all day long, but I need to see a plan. I, I work for Arcatis. Arcatis is a global firm which does design of solar and wind farms, but we only do it on huge sites. So I know a lot about it. Uh, you don't need to sell, I'm all for it. I'm not frustrated with solar at all. But I'd like to see a plan so that we as a board could understand whether it fits for the town or it doesn't.
Russ, did you, did you get?
On roofs, but we have a historical, uh, commission that we, we would need to get that approved. Um, so there, there's more steps to it.
Yeah.
Than what, what you could understand without living here for thirty years like me and Barbara and Jim. But, um, I think if you gave us a plan, we could read before a meeting, uh, and and then have questions is the, is the most efficient way to go about it.
Yeah, can you see the screen right now, Russell?
Did, Russ, did you get, did you open the packet that I sent? Because I, I had this in there.
I didn't have a chance to do a thing today.
Okay, so Russell, just so you know, we, we did do a lot of what you're asking us to do. Will, will, we can, um, form.
When, when was that plan sent? When was that sent?
I sent the whole packet to you yesterday.
Yeah, I need more time than a day to read through something like that. To really understand it and put my questions together. And yesterday was Labor Day and I was on a lake, so, um.
Barbara, we're happy to do that for you and for us and the rest of the board. I mean, we, we have a very, uh, very organized, um, step-by-step process. Rust, I'll be happy to share with you. There's usually about a hundred and twenty to thirty steps in getting these projects from this discussion to actually something on the ground. So I'm happy to put something like that together with you. You'll see the layout and design that we initially did. Um, so we, we have done that work. I, I respect that you haven't seen it yet or haven't had a chance to look at some of the, again, we're only coming in very high level here just to get a gauge for the interest in the town. But absolutely, we would, we would provide that. We respect your role as an engineer. That's super helpful to know that you are that type of person because you can guide us, um, because you do have the local knowledge that we don't have. But we do have, you know, ten years of experience building these and developing these projects in very sensitive areas. Um, so, you know, we can draw our experience, we can draw on your experience, and we can come together and see if it makes sense. We will not, but we will not waste the town's time. If there are any uh, fatal flaws that come out of this next step of analysis that we do, um, we're gonna bring it to your attention. We're gonna say, we did our best. We tried to overcome the challenges. They weren't, we couldn't overcome them for whatever reasons. And, and we will go from there. But we, we are only in the business of finding the most amount of value that we can bring to our towns and we can point to a lot of towns we've done it. So, um, I think to answer your question, Barbara, the, the ask of the board would be, um, you know, the permission of the board to have us proceed forward with this, what I would call kind of next step of fatal flaw review and analysis and put something together for the board to review and decide if at that point, are they com- are you comfortable enough to move forward with, with our company to be your, you know, solar company to help you deploy these projects. At, at some point, we would need a commitment from the board because, you know, we'll be spending money now, but we'll be spending, you know, a lot more money when you start getting into the full permitting.
Does this cost us anything?
Not much.
That doesn't cost us anything?
Nope.
No, Russell. Yeah.
It's a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, this is, this is the new program that that's being put out there. And basically, this would come at no cost to your town. This is why we're really going gangbusters through our towns and talking to people, especially in areas that don't have the, the power capacity online, things like that. Because this is a no-brainer. You're updating everything and it costs you nothing right now with the new CT and federal incentives.
Okay, I have two questions. One, um, the last time another incentive came, it was after the ZREC program. We missed the boat. It's, uh, getting in on, it's, so is there a timeline with the state to make sure we don't miss?
Yeah, Barbara, so right now, the new program is not, like, the old program you're referring to, the ZREC had a, a financial cap to it. Like, there was so many dollars allowed before, and once it's filled, it's filled. Uh, and then they started to, the incentive started to step down in value. And then, so if you had a project that was costly to build and that incentive stepped down, that could be a reason why a project didn't move forward. Under the new program, now they've set it at a certain number of megawatts, so a certain number of projects. So in the first year, I believe it's like eighty megawatts, and then the next year it's a similar number. So the worst case scenario is not that you lose your spot. You just are on the waiting list for the next year. If all the projects were filled up in year one and you were there, ready to go and, you know, ten other companies got ahead of you and submitted, the worst case scenario, you'd be on, you'd be first on the waiting list. So it's not like you lose your incentive. You just wait to the next year. You wouldn't build anything until you had that final state approval. So you're a little bit excited from that kind of situation, which was very frustrating for a lot of customers.
Yeah, yeah, but for me, um, really pushing in for, you know, two, two times when these things became available and working with people and then find out that you're out of luck, so.
Yeah, you're kind of at the tail end of the program. Unfortunately, you know, the ZREC program started, you know, many years ago in Connecticut and it just took some time to get it going. And it sounds like you were on the tail end of that program, unfortunately, and, and you, you bore the frustration of probably that with, uh, not anybody's fault, just the timing of the program.
Right.
Now, yeah, can I make a few comments?
Sure.
We have three, um, locations that you fellows chose. I do believe the school, I wouldn't even go there even as far as step two because, um, I don't think it's gonna work up there. It's a regional school. And we would have to get agreement from two other towns totally and share the proceeds with those two other towns.
Correct.
So I don't, and then the next comment is, um, which of these other two sites actually, it, it appears the landfill site would produce more energy than the rooftops of town buildings.
For sure.
So we get more bang for our buck and not our buck, but your buck.
Yeah. Thank you for recognizing.
But up at the landfill, how, how many acres do you, uh, see using at the, at the transfer? I mean, there's only seven up there, correct?
Uh, I believe that the two lots there were a little bit more than that. That's roughly about eight acres of, the, the blue blob you're seeing unfortunately, the, the, on the screen, those are where the panels are. It's, it's hard to see on the screen, but, uh, yeah, I think inside that kind of blob of, of where the panels would go is about, you know, eight or nine acres, I think roughly from memory.
That's a sizable spot. And you would use the majority of that for panels and control structures and stuff like that?
That's correct. And shade management with some of the, the buffers of the trees, you know, around it to make sure that not the panels aren't shaded.
That site is much more productive.
Yes.
One hundred percent.
Yeah. And the, and the town, it's the town's land. So to your point, Jim, I think it would, again, we just gave you a cross-section of some ideas, just you get thinking about it. I respect your point about regional schools. I've worked with another regional school and it, it didn't happen because of everything you just described. Uh, but we didn't want to just assume that without having, at least having the open discussion, but the, this, the town land near the, the transfer station, I, is the, probably the lowest hanging fruit that we can all spend time on and see if there's value or not.
I, I feel that if the, if the people of Roxbury are ready to move forward and to look into uh, solar renewable energy, w- we can make this happen. I mean, we have, we have the spots that we can make this work. Uh, the town has to want to do it. When they, if they get to the point they really want to do it, it can happen.
Yep. Yeah.
I mean, if, if, um, some of the other locations that I remember working on was, uh, the elementary school that's right here in our community and our library and our senior center. So those are other buildings if we didn't go to the high school. I mean, high schools is really ideal, but I don't know how that would work. I just don't know.
Absolutely float this with you guys and figure out where your prime locations are. Uh, the good news, as Andrew explained, we're at the beginning of this. It's just starting. I mean, the second part of this is the storage and the batteries and things like that, but right now, we know these can happen. So we can make these things that you just, we just wanted to get in, introduce ourselves. Obviously, I know Lorenzo now, we've had many conversations, but we haven't met any of you guys. And with your blessing, we would love the opportunity to start passing information back and forth and see what we can truly do with you guys, especially while these incentives are there.
Yeah, Barbara, Barbara, there's one last thing I just want to point out from your experience with the old program. The new program is gonna mimic something similar to the old program, like the small ZREC program and the large ZREC program. That the intent was not to have a completely dramatic change from what was, what is. Um, so it sounds like if there's some sites where like a community center where it's a smaller project, those projects, the way it reads with the legislation right now, it sounds like they're just gonna flow like on a first come, first served basis. And then the bigger projects are gonna be more like a once a year, once you're fully permitted, you've spent all the money to get everything approved. Then you submit your project. So there, that's the point I think that Bill brought up too, is, is there's a blend here of how the benefits flow back to the town based on the way this new program is structured. But, you know, you're fortunate to be at the start line, not at the finish line when it was like, you know, before when you looked at it.
Andrew, can you go over those numbers just so they can see, uh, how that works based on some of our findings?
Well, I'll just, I mean, they have, this is, they have this in their packet, Bill, so they are all looking at this. This is in me. So they have all the information. We'll let them absorb that. I think it's pretty self-explanatory right now, I believe, but, um, but yeah, I mean, we, again, I think Bill's point's well taken. We were, just want to introduce ourselves.
Yeah.
And, and have the opportunity to, you know, move forward if you want or get some feedback. But, uh, again, to the discretion of the board, how they'd like, how you'd like to proceed.
Uh, um, personally, yeah, I'd like to, uh, move forward. I'd like to go to the next step. I do have one last question and then we are gonna move on.
Yes.
So how are, how are you making money?
Yeah, so we are, we are the developer. Um, and in some cases, we're the owner, operator, developer, depending on the projects we take on. Um, so our job is to take it from this point, which is to get the permission of the town to work with this, this little piece of land, let's say, for example, the transfer station. And we, our job is, and we get paid on all the work we do between now and getting the project ready for construction. And then it's our job then there to do one of two things, decide if we want to own the project ourselves. Um, or if we want one of our financial partners that we work with who is also owners of these projects, if they want to own it with us or on their own. So I, there's a, there can be a handoff from developer to owner. Um, but again, to Bill's point in the size of Santa Energy, you know, that is something that, um, you know, we're, we're looking at uh, as a company and how that fits into our, you know, short-term and long-term business plans. But ultimately, our, our initial job is the, as a developer, to get all the permits in place and ready for construction. So then we can move into that phase and, you know, that's when the town starts to see the benefits.
Okay. So, uh, Jim and Russ?
Yeah, I'd like to go, go to the next step and learn more about this, for sure.
Great.
Did you want to, uh, make, somebody make a motion that we do give them the authority to go to the next step for us to, uh, research this and come back?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. All right. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, wonderful, wonderful, guys. We are gonna start doing our homework. Uh, you can call me anytime. Um, we don't have too much. I'll ask Lorenzo for all your information, so I can keep you guys CC'd to have the information going forward.
That would be great.
Yep, and we'll go from there. And as we find things, we will work directly with you guys and let you guys know every step of the way.
Great. Nice meeting you.
Guys, thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it to the board. Talk to you soon.
Take care. Nice presentation. Okay. All right, um, moving along here. I think that's a, I think it's good that we're gonna move to the next step here. All right, so the next thing on the agenda, just noting that that vaccine clinic is available for anyone, uh, to come on September ninth, which is two days from now. And there's no appointment needed. I don't, there's no way I'm knowing how many people are gonna be there. Um, they had actually asked if we could have some police out for parking, et cetera. But, uh, not, none of ours are gonna be available. They will be at that funeral, unfortunately, of the trooper that passed away. And, uh, one will come back and, and be there to help. I don't know that there's gonna be a big crowd, though. Um, so anyway, then, the, for September eleventh, it's the twentieth anniversary. And, uh, this board of selectmen has always, um, asked that the bells get told. Uh, the two churches have agreed and they are going to do at two times for one minute. And we're gonna have, I'll get the information out about a town's townwide moment of silence at nine fifty-nine and at ten twenty-eight. Those are the two times that the, um, towers fell. And, um, it's just a time to, we've also asked that everybody take the time to do one good deed during the day to honor those that were killed, as well as the bravery and heroism of the first responders. So, that's just reporting on that. That will be on, uh, Saturday, September eleven. On Sunday, September twelfth, we have the volunteer recognition picnic. Tried to get the word out, an e-blast will go out tomorrow, if not tonight. Jim is, uh, getting that ready for me to try and get, and so that the townspeople understand that they're invited to come to, to this. And, uh, it's gonna be noon to two thirty PM up at the park and hope to see you. I hope to see your commissions and board members invited emergency services and, uh, all the other boards and commissions that are here, as well as the public. So I hope it's good. It'll be nice. We have one food truck because everybody's booked. But, uh, worked out a, a deal with them and it should be nice. So I hope to see you both there. We're not only honoring our volunteers, but we have several, uh, notables that I wanted to mention during that presentation. Um, okay, the award, the senior center painting bid. I put that in. We had three people bid, as you could see. They go from twenty thousand five hundred to forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars while bidding on the same thing. And, um, I would like to make, have a motion to award this bid to Moker Services. So Bridgewater, we know, we know Jim, um, we know how he works. He's painted here before. And, uh, we do have the money budgeted for this.
So moved.
Yeah, definitely second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. All right, the housing authority, what I'd like to do is kind of just meld this into, um, you know, the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee. There are people that are interested in serving on the housing authority, but they are would also serve on the Affordable Housing. On the housing authority, but they are, would also serve on the affordable housing. Um, steering committee. First of all, to get the contract back, we applied for a grant. Um, it was signed by the state. And now I uh, would like to sign a contract with the cog. To, to put this in, in their hands to get this thing organized and going. Some of the people that I would like to recommend uh, be on this subcommittee would be um, Charlie and Sue Stoffaker have said they are interested. Uh, Joan Temple, Kathy Wolf, Judith Solomon, Larry Wagner, Julie Steers, Peter Philos, David Peters, Jim Conway. Uh, Lenora Plotnik from Wetlands and uh, Geraldine, our senior. Um, count up.
So moved.
Municipal agents.
Need a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll take a motion. Sure. So move to, let me sign this contract and get going and uh, send something out to invite these people. And so Jocelyn will set up a meeting from here on out to get this group going.
I make motion that you sign the contract and move forward.
Okay. Second?
Yeah.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, one of the, I sent you some information on the um, census, which was interesting. And I wanted to make sure I had something in front of me, which can't find. What was interesting about it to me, just hold one second. I have it here somewhere. This is crazy. I'm tired. Nope, no, no, this is crazy. I had it right here. This happens every time to me. I don't know what it is. It was basically that. The state uh, increased about over three thousand people. And you know, the majority of that was in the Fairfield County area. And our area actually lost people, which is amazing because we had such an influx of people during COVID. Um, let's see, can you scroll that? I think I put that in here. Yeah. If you could see Roxbury there, um, wait a minute. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty ten. There were, there's a hundred and four more adults. But there is minus a hundred and six children. So while we have six percent increase in adults, we were minus twenty-four percent in adult, um, in children. So our population went from twenty-two sixty. Uh, I'm sorry, twenty-two sixty-two to twenty-two sixty. And uh, it's just a small decrease, but overall the whole area did lose. You could see Washington. Um, they actually gained pe- they, they did gain in Washington. So I don't know how they figured this out, but. They did. And overall, uh, our whole area lost people. So I know that they're looking at all of this because of the um, you know, how they're going to divvy up uh, the legislature and who's going to serve, et cetera. So that'll be the next thing coming out. To see. Um, okay, the dog park. Uh, but the, there is a survey. And uh, Jimmy and I, Jimmy will get that out. I will make sure that that goes out this week for the student. And, and he, he came up with, with the questions. I think I sent them out to you. And uh, we'll get those out to the people, but they also need um, to have a motion to get an eight twenty-four referral if we are going to allow this. At the park, because it's a, it's, it's municipal land.
Would that be now or, or we wait for that, for, for the referral?
Well, I think, I think we should do it at the same time because you know, it takes time for planning to meet. And actually, if there is, uh, the survey comes back that people are very interested in having this. This student needs to go to planning.
Yeah, so we wait, right?
Uh, I think we should, only, only because of me, I think we should get it out sooner. Because planning is going to have to deal with it. I, I do believe it's going to go through. I do believe that people are interested in it. It's not like putting a building at the park.
Need a, do you need a motion now then for an eight, oh, I'll make a motion for an eight twenty-four referral for a dog park.
I agree. I'll second.
All right, up at Hurlbert Park. Second, all in favor?
Hurlbert Park, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, the gazebo, actually it is all taken apart. It is already down in the back. We have to decide, uh, that I'd have to do another eight twenty-four. Are we going to be putting that in this field over here? I gave uh, you all a map or um, a drawing the last time of where we would put it in uh, Munson Meadow. Are we still interested in doing that?
I think Munson Meadows. Yeah, Munson Meadows is good.
I'll make, yeah, go ahead, Jim. Sorry.
I just, there was a stakeout there, Barbara. Was that stake somebody's?
Oh, I was wondering what that was. You know what? That's probably. I didn't know if we should put it there. I, I was trying to figure out what that was. So they uh, I bet Paul Swanson put that out there.
I just, it was, to me, I'd like to see it between the Christmas tree and the store.
Right. That's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Talked about.
Little closer to the store.
Yeah.
I think people will use it.
Yeah. All right, so.
I'll make a motion for an eight twen- eight twenty, eight twenty-four referral for a gazebo at um, Munson Meadows.
I agree. Second.
Second, okay. And the only other thing is I would like to just put a little, a little, little, I mean, plaque on it to um, thank Kirk Yovan. Because he's donating that to the town.
Of course, of course.
He's going to also help get that thing put together. Um, back again. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ARP money plan. Now, the Board of Finance is going to be meeting on this. And there are, there now a couple of other requests have come in. And one is from. The Roxbury Land Trust to, if we could give them five thousand dollars towards uh, fixing the volunteer bridge. Apparently it is seventy-seven thousand dollars. They've raised about half of it and they would like the town to donate five thousand. I'm not asking for. A yes, no, or anything because the plan has not been completed and we've been meeting with the Board of Finance and they are, obviously have a um, a say in this. But also I got a um, a call from the HVA. For looking for any amount that might go towards replacing the Botsword Hill culvert. Now, the HVA, it's all about, you know, the fish going through the culvert. Now, this thing did get stopped up in this storm. We had three culverts that got pretty stopped up with logs, et cetera. So. Um, I don't know, Russ, you were saying, you know, that Washington has, is putting some money towards culverts, et cetera, but personally. I think we have two that are worse than Botsword Hill now at this point, and one is Squire Road and the other one is Painter Hill. At the intersection of three seventeen.
Totally agree. Totally agree that those two are more important than Botsword.
So.
Whatever we could get money for, we should get it and we should, we should try to get as much money as we can for culverts. Cause that's, that, that was kind of new. I, I read that in voices that Bethlehem and Woodbury were putting that in. I didn't know you could do that. Or I would have had more of an interest. Uh, I thought it was just all emergency stuff.
No, I mean, we have to come up with this plan. We are looking to um, support our emergency services in purchasing some AEDs and a striker cot. And we were looking at the build out of the firehouse. Um, the other thing is Jimmy is working, looking into the broadband. We, we definitely want to get that CEN network from the school to the senior center. And um, the, yeah, the broadband infrastructure, because infrastructure is a no-brainer with this, the state's all over it. Um, and then the other thing, we were looking to help some of our nonprofits. Um, the friends of the senior center and the friends of the library, because they really missed out on their fundraising this year. And these things all have to get some money and dollars put to them. But um, we can certainly look at adding. Just to back up on the culverts, I was supposed to meet on Friday. With um, Cardinal Engineering about these culverts and now I'm not meeting till this Friday. And so um, you know, to even have a, a dollar figure, I don't have that tonight. So, but, but we can certainly add those in. They do need to be addressed. Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, that, and, and so, uh, the Chapag. Russ, what do you want to say about that? I see that Washington's giving ten thousand dollars to the Chapag River. What are you giving it to? Association or?
But look, I think was, watching uh, Waterbury comply with the contract shouldn't take much money. It's pretty easy. I've been doing it. So. Um, it's, for example, they were only putting two million gallons a day in and people were upset, but. They're doing that because they're fixing that huge valve and that that was all planned and we were aware of it. Um, if, if we want to put ten thousand into that, fine. I, I'd rather put more money into the land trust, to be honest with you.
What do you mean, put it into the land trust?
Well, you know, give the land trust ten for the bridge. The bridge is important and they're working hard and. Um, again, working with Waterbury, I, I don't see the problem with them complying with the contract. I think. Where, where they were going is they're, they're on Waterbury for a conservation plan, a better plan to, to waste less water. And Waterbury is doing what they gotta do with the grants they're getting. I don't understand why we should pay to. Hire consultants to watch Waterbury's consultants. I, I could do that.
Okay, but so in the meantime, where, well, I, I think I have um, uh, the Chapag River update, since we're talking about it, it is down on the agenda further. But where are we with uh, these bills that have come in? That we're being asked to pay?
You were supposed to determine what we paid. We, we agreed to five thousand and you were supposed to determine what we paid, not this, just this year. But into the past by a couple of years. How much have we paid them?
Yeah, I believe we've paid them.
Personally, personally, I, we did, we just sent them a five thousand dollar check?
No, they must, they had to have, well, wait a minute. I thought. We did, we did get a bill also. I think several years ago, as I recall. We did make a donation because they did ask for it and it was in the amount of five thousand dollars. Then we got the first bill here, several, just a couple of months, within this year anyway, a couple of months ago.
I remember that.
And we, it was unexpected. And um, I believe we paid it, but then another one came in and that's when it was like, hey, wait a minute. And I think the, the first one was, I think it was under two thousand dollars. That we did pay, but now we've got two more that have come in and we're, we haven't done anything with them. Because again, it's, well, wait a minute, we haven't hired anybody. We don't really know about this. And that's when you jumped in and you were going to. Work with them and figure out what was going on.
Well, I know what's going on. It's to pay the consultant they hired to review the conservation plan by Waterbury. And to comment on the conservation plan and she billed more than, I think, five or six thousand dollars. So split between four parties. That's the two land trusts, Deep Rock, Roxbury Land Trust, Washington and Roxbury. I, I thought our share was like fifteen hundred, something like that. Now, if there's more bills coming in, I don't really know about. But if you send me them, if you send me what we have, what we haven't paid, I'll figure out what it is. But my recommendation was to say to the Shepug River Association, which I'm a part of. And I'll say it to them, is we'll pay these bills, but no more from here on forward. Unless we agree to beforehand. We can't run it, we can't run a town like this. We can't just get bills and say, oh, it's for the river. The river's a great thing. The river is a great thing. But we're, we're not an environmental uh, agency or we're not an environmental group. We're a town and we can't be given to an environmental cause unless we understand ahead of time. What it's for on behalf of the taxpayers.
Right. Right.
So if you send me the bills, I'll, I'll, I'll find out what they're for from uh, Susan. And if it, if it's for reviewing conservation plans, which isn't part of the agreement, uh, well, you should have told us this beforehand.
Yep.
Not just send the bill and say it's for the river. The river's great. Yeah, we know the river's great. We got it. Thank you. You know?
I know. Believe me. Okay. Um, thank you. I will send you, I will send them.
If you want to put five grand in for the Shepug River Valley Association, then let's do it. But I know Washington did ten. Sounds like we have more things to worry about like culverts and uh, our emergency services. And I think that right now is more important.
Well, they also got a lot more money than we did.
Right.
So. Okay. Um, so we are working on getting costs for the things that we've talked about. And uh, again, you know, we'll meet with the Board of Finance and move forward when we have that meeting, which I believe is uh, next week? Yeah, I think it's next week, next Tuesday.
Yep.
All right. Uh, so Trance, Jim, did you want to say anything?
No, I'll suck.
All right, the transfer station. So uh, we were talking about the tires and you told me to go back and look and find out what other towns do. And I got, so Morris, Washington, Sherman, uh, Brookfield, Southbury, Bridgewater, they do, they all charge for tires. Anywhere, Bridgewater charges three, if it has a rim, it's six. If it's a truck tire, it's fifteen. Um, Morris, same thing, three, six, fifteen. Washington charges a car tire regardless is six. Truck tires are fifteen. Sherman and New Milford, it's five dollars for a car, ten if it has a rim and twenty with, for a truck tire. So.
Let's, let's do the three, six, fifteen. Seems to fit.
Three, three dollars for a car tire?
Six if it has a rim and fifteen for a truck tire.
All right. I don't, it's fine by me.
Now, this is the, the company that takes our tires, will they take them with rims?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Actually, um, yes, we do.
Yeah.
But, and if they, let me see here, I got this information. Let's see. Stan. Hmm. You know what? Uh.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so anyway, per tire, we're losing money if we do this because we're being charged five fifty. Um, uh, twenty-five for a large truck tire. That basically.
Well, then let's do fif- let's do five fifty and twenty-five. Let's just make it even.
Yeah.
Forget the rim, you know, if the rim's on it, we'll, we'll, we'll learn whether they take the rim or not. If they don't, we'll have to revisit it. But for now, we should do this as soon as we can.
Yeah, I know, because it really, it really jumped in price. It was um, like I said, we were paying thirty-five dollars for passengers and uh, that went to forty. But it was really the tru- truck tires that were forty-five and it jumped to eighty. That, that's per yard. So they figured it out that it would be twenty-five dollars a tire. All right, so that's for a truck tire.
They don't count the tires in that container. They just take the container and weigh it.
Right. They eyeball it.
Yeah.
Many.
I make a motion to charge five fifty for a car tire and twenty-five dollars for a truck tire.
Okay. Do I have a second for?
Uh.
You know, it's, it's, you know what? It's a catch twenty-two thing because boy, I don't want to find them on the side of the road. And what I don't understand is that people will actually get their tires changed and instead of paying two fifty or whatever to, for wherever they get it.
Some, some do their own, Barbie. You'd be surprised.
I'm kind of, I got a tendency of going back to the three, six, fifteen or whatever.
Okay, then I'll change my motion to be three for a car tire, six for a car tire with a rim. Okay, then I'll change my motion to be three for a car tire, six for a car tire with a rim and twenty-five for a truck tire.
And we need to find out.
I agree with Jim, I do.
It might, it might be get more people to, uh, to do it and actually, yeah.
Yeah, if you, if you jack it up too much, we're gonna be paying for it ourselves.
Yeah, and it's, um, I mean, we've, we've always paid to get rid of tires and now we're just getting a little help. We're still gonna, we're still gonna be on the loose, losing end, but we, we are with the garbage, we are with the garbage already. Um, what we charge people to throw their garbage for a whole year doesn't even come close to covering.
No, you're, you're right. You're right. Okay, Russ, but first you said three, six, fifteen. Now you just said three, six, twenty-five.
Draw that motion and I now make a motion for three bucks for a car tire. I'm sorry, where am I? Yeah, three bucks for a car tire, six bucks for a car tire with a rim and, and twenty-five dollars for a truck tire. That's my motion.
Okay, so you went from fifteen to twenty-five for a truck tire.
I'm sorry. It's three, six and fifteen, right?
Correct, three, six, fifteen.
That's my motion, three, six and fifteen.
All right. Okay.
Uh, I'll second it. How do we, Albert's gonna be up at the dump. And I can just see it now. He's gonna, some guy's gonna say that it's a car tire and Albert's gonna say, no, it's a truck tire.
Oh, come on, there's a huge difference. There's a huge difference.
Uh, there's all sizes of trucks.
Well, he can make that call. At least we're getting something.
Yeah, oh, I, I agree.
So Tim, what are you saying? We call a truck tire over a si- a certain size?
I mean, the company, we, that, that we pay this company and they just eyeball it, weigh it, whatever. Um, they don't have to determine what kind of vehicle it came off of.
Well, Albert could do that. He drives trucks.
Yeah, I know.
So I mean, are you saying a pickup truck is a truck or is it a car?
Well, uh, that's what I mean. There's a lot of pickup trucks. They're called trucks with the tires to be smaller than some eighteen inch car tires.
Right.
Some of these.
How about anything over an eighteen is a truck tire?
Okay, that makes sense.
Right? Isn't that the, that's about the cutoff between big SUVs and little ones?
And that's written right on the tires, so there's no arguing it.
Okay.
So I call it in my motion, I would like to revise it to say that a truck tire is any tire size eighteen and up.
Okay. Yep.
All right. I've lost control here, so. Want to second that again, Jim?
I'll, I'll second, yeah.
Okay, second. And, um, so, uh, now the discussion part is when are we starting? You want me to start at October one?
Great.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you. Um, Davenport, wellers and minor bridges. Um, again, I'm going to be meeting, first of all, uh, the notice to proceed on Davenport did go out. Again, everything's backed up and they don't believe that they're gonna be able to even start that, um, getting that culvert in here and doing that project to the spring. So it's a good thing we did the Band-Aid project pretty, pretty good because it's now gonna, this is definitely the second or third winter it's gonna have to go through. However, um, NJR was awarded the contract and they are in the process of getting ready for the spring. Uh, I'm disappointed. I thought we would have got going on that. Um, so minor bridge, uh, I need to know what y'all want to do because the, the bids came in ridiculous amounts, even, even Cardinal said that and we can rebid it and see what happens, but, uh, it was way, way over. I mean, they had given us an estimate of, you know, possibly at, in the beginning, it was around twenty thousand. Then when they really looked into it, it went from sixty to eighty thousand. Said maybe, okay, hundred thousand maybe to make these repairs on.
Is this, yeah, this is the, uh, not the culvert, but the, the, uh,
The bridge.
Rubber that, that, that needs to be replaced.
Yep. And I mean, it was, you know, three hundred, four hundred thousand. It was ridic, they, they were shaking their heads, couldn't believe it. So people are busy and they're just, I mean, one, one company was from Massachusetts and they're just throwing it out there to see if they're, if you can get a bite. I think maybe we should rebid it again, uh, maybe wait a little bit, but it definitely.
Yeah, bid it in the winter.
Yep.
Bid it in the, let's do that in December.
Yeah.
So you don't put it on, uh, whoever wins.
All right, so wellers bridge, um, which was really interesting because the state has come forward and said that there's a new program and that the state will actually take on the, uh, the whole bidding process, uh, looking into engineering, et cetera, for wellers bridge. I said, well, I wanted to jump on that. So they wanted to have a meeting. I was not gonna be around. I asked you guys, Jim, you were able to go, you went with Butch?
Yes.
And, um, they, they said that we, that, that they met the other day and, um, that, that they would like to set up a meeting and to go over the program as well as the next steps. And they are holding these meetings virtually. I said, yep, I'm on board with that. So I am going to be meeting them on September fourteenth from eleven to twelve. If you would like to participate, that would be great. But Jim, you can fill us in on what. What'd you say?
My calendar. I'll put it on my calendar. Hopefully I'm in the office that day.
All right, and I'll send, send you the invite. But Jim, you were there, so.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I heard Albert's version. I'd rather ha- hear yours. I guess Butch told him it's.
Well, they, they, it's the deck, the underneath, the concrete decking that apparently was not replaced in two thousand one because in two thousand one, it was still stable and hadn't started to deteriorate. So in oh one, we did the upper portion, uh, the travel portion and the sides and all that. Now, he showed us pictures. We didn't go down and take a look because it's pretty steep. But, uh, rebar is exposed. It, it needs taking care of.
Yeah.
And these guys.
Replacement, Jim.
These guys said there's gonna be three levels of, uh, repair. They're going to give us numbers on three levels. Level one, obviously the most inexpensive, but yet only addresses a small portion of the problem. Uh, it's a temporary fix and they're gonna go to the next step, which is obviously a little better, a little more expensive. The third step is pretty much, uh, a new bridge, wider.
Do that.
Um, and he said it would be, it would be around for fifty years plus on the most expensive, uh, replacement and they're gonna address the scour issue um, and the whole nine yards. They can, they can patch it up or they can replace the whole thing. He said it would be shut down for roughly four to six months.
Yeah, do it. Everybody on wellers bridge, when this is over, he's gonna ask that the bridge not be replaced.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's what happened in, that's what happened the last time. I mean, we closed the bridge, we closed the road and everybody was ecstatic and they didn't want it to be reopened. And it's, you know what? It's, it's unbelievable because, um, we spent so much time, you know, yeah, you believe your engineers and, um, they just didn't go far enough because the whole decking was replaced. And, uh, we did a lot of work on that bridge.
The bottom portion, he showed that the bottom portion stayed where it was and they redid the top portion.
You know, we, we even, I, I, it's, I know, it's terrible, but they, I mean, we even, I had to even pick out a paint color for underneath to paint, you know, the, um,
Painted it, Barb.
Painted over it.
Yeah, they painted over it.
It has been twenty years and, you know, the upper portion's fine. What they replaced in oh one, it's, it, the problem lies in what they didn't replace in oh one.
Right, right. So they're gonna have to, you know, remove the whole, what we did, which is really, uh, it's terrible, really is. But anyway, we'll find out their report on September fourteenth from eleven to twelve and I'll send you the invite when I get it. And we are, uh, I think that that's the way to go, right? Instead of hiring an outside firm?
The state's paying for all the engineering and this, and then there's, uh, uh, apparently it's eighty, eighty percent is gonna be covered and we come up with twenty percent.
Right.
Of course, it's still quite a bit. If they do the whole bridge, you're still looking at a pretty good chunk, but.
Well, it's, uh, right, but it's, and so a grant can be applied for through the local bridge program, the federal local bridge program.
Yep.
And, uh, they have eighty, twenty.
And they'll take the, and repair, not repair, but they'll redo the road from the bridge right to sixty, seventy, seven.
Yeah. Um, it will be nice having it closed, but, and it will be a fight to open it again for the people that live there. So, all right, um, so what do I have on here? Uh, the fire marshal's report, I did send you that. It came in today. And then I also sent you the resident trooper report. If you just want to accept those, the, the, um.
Accept it.
Okay. I mean, it's not a motion or anything that we'll just accept both of those August reports. Um, so other business, I want to add, I do want to add three things and I know Russ doesn't like it.
You gotta hurry up, well, because my phone is running out of power.
I want to add an ordinance that the tax collector has requested that we, uh, we get. So I, I would, I would put a new ordinance regarding, um, out of state motor vehicle registrations. And the second thing is we are redoing our ordinances and Jimmy and I have been working on this. Jimmy's putting a lot of time into it. And so some of the comments that came back was, um, some of, if, if there's a fine in any of our ordinances, it's like a hundred.
We need to add, right? We need to add these before you go into detail, right?
I know. It's all right. So I would like to say, one is the out of state motor vehicle registration ordinance. Two is, um, current ordinance updates. And three, H R R A, um, H R R A, I'll just put that on. I'd like to have those three things added.
So moved to add the three items to the agenda.
Okay. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so there is, um, an act concerning recommendations by the Department of Motor Vehicles and they have a section titled out of state motor vehicle registrations. And it, we, uh, became law and it was signed by the governor. I see that Waterbury, uh, passed an amendment allowing authorities to find residents that have out of state plates. That's, that's, uh, there's a little bit more to that, obviously. It's not that they just have out of state plates because, you know, they can have an out of state place, uh, plate and still live here if they are also a resident of another state. But, um.
How do we manage that?
It's, uh, it's.
You gotta live here for less than six months, right? I mean, I have friends who purposely go to Florida. Um, but they gotta prove that they're down there for more than six months by credit cards.
Right.
That's how they, they watch, what they, they could figure out if they're actually living there for over six months. How do we do that as a town?
I know, I mean, you can't pull anybody over because they don't have, um, you can't pull someone over because they don't have a Connecticut license plate.
Right, and so how do we do that?
Um.
I don't want to pass an ordinance that we can't enforce or, or causes more cost on our end at the, enforce something.
Let's see, by using out of state registrations, they're, uh, let me see. I don't know how Waterbury did it, but they said they issued, for example, seventy-eight citations of, uh, motorists improperly registering vehicles outside.
Maybe you have a talk with the mayor and we could bring it up next month.
Okay, yep, because.
Let's figure out how they do it, because I'm all for it, but I don't know how you figure it out.
It's, um, it's basic, and it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. If you can impose by ordinance, a fine of up to two hundred and fifty dollars on owners of motor vehicles that are subject to local property tax, but they're not registered with the DMV here in Connecticut. So I will, um, I can look for, you know, get the.
Why isn't the DMV doing this? Never mind. Some question.
Right. So it, well, I, I will get information on how or maybe even get a sample ordinance for next month.
Great idea.
But I just wanted to know if you wanted to move forward with it. Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
All right, um, the state statutes, um, uh, our current ordinances, some of them have fines, it's a hundred dollars. The state statutes allow fines at a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars if we want to change our one hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars.
I make a motion to change the hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for state statutes.
I'll go along with that, I'll second that.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
And so, and also, um, our, we, uh, for us to go out to bid every, during my term, it's gone from, we had to go out to bid if something cost five thousand dollars and it went to ten thousand dollars. It is now twenty thousand dollars. And we would have to, I guess, get the, I don't know that we would have to ask the Board of Finance for permission, but the state is saying twenty-five thousand dollars and you have to go out to bid. So anything under that, you don't have to do all of this bidding, which I think is great personally.
I make a motion to up the bidding requirement to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, I'll, we'll change the ordinance.
All in favor? Oh, I don't, did you do that?
No, I, I'm going to, all in favor? Aye. And last one. I would like in, in our, um, solid waste and recycling ordinance, it gives the Board of Selectmen the authority to, um, pass along, oh my gosh, the authority to enforce our ordinance for processing registrations for collectors and haulers within the town of Roxbury. And I would like to pass that authority for the registration, et cetera. And following up on haulers and collectors, wait, I want to, I want to tell you what I said exactly, my God. To give the H R R A the authority to enforce our solid waste and recycling ordinance as outlined in section eleven dash forty-two, six of our ordinance for processing registrations for collecting and hauling within the town of Roxbury.
So moved.
Are they gonna charge more for this or?
No, no, what, what, I mean, it is about, it is about different haulers that, um, are in different towns and, uh, you know, that there are problems with some of them and they would like, if I could pass this along to them, it would be a great thing.
Now, would they have the authority to award, uh, so-called bid to another hauler? Or do we still have the final say?
No, they, they, um, registrations are going, are, are going through them. And, um, if there is a problem, they're obviously on every per, every person that they are gonna register as a collector or a hauler. And they, they will obviously check the background, et cetera. And if that is, if there is an issue, they are going to talk to the first selectman and we can say, I'd like you to deny that. I would give them the authority to do that instead of.
So collector, collector means somebody goes door to door picking up trash?
Well, in our ordinance, it is correct. Yep, it's a hauler or a collector.
So does this pertain to the, uh, people taking the dumpsters out of our site?
Uh, no. Yeah, uh, wait a minute, no, that's, that's different. I actually, I take that back. Because our, for example, George Stone, he absolutely has to register. He is registered.
So what I'm leading up to, do they have authority over George Stone or do we still have that?
No, they would.
They would.
But they're better equipped to handle it, Jim.
Yep.
I mean, they, they have an interest, they have an interest.
But I, but I see what you're saying. We,
Yeah.
Uh, they, they can't say that they can't come in here and haul out of here. We do have the final say on that. But if there is something that is wrong there, they can deny it, absolutely. If there's nothing wrong, then they can't deny it because the town has said this is who we would like to have to do that part of it. Because it's, they, they're hauling to their transfer station. Because it's, they, they're hauling to their transfer station, our H R R A. This all involves locals, um, who are picking trash up from residents predominantly.
Predomin- mostly the guys that go door-to-door.
Yes.
And we have at, at present, just one, correct? Jeremy Johnson.
Correct.
So we're giving this.
There was, there was another, um, All-American, I believe they're registered now here and, um.
So now these people are gonna go to H R R A and register to haul and pick up in Roxbury. Are we gonna have like six or eight different haulers running around town?
Uh, that could, it could very well be that way, but they are not going to our transfer station.
Right. I'm just trying to figure out if we're creating a, uh, issue with garbage trucks every day of the week running through Roxbury.
Um, not that, not that many people to have garbage trucks every day of the week. There's not that much garbage.
A lot of, are you kidding?
If you have, if you have three or four instead of Jeremy, you're still gonna have the same amount of trash brought in by different people.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people do go there themselves.
And it's, I don't have a huge problem. It's just, it's, it's taking some control away from us.
So what?
It is, it is really about, for example, um, but I mean, it's, you know, I can't prevent you from calling somebody and, you know, Joe's Hauling to come and pick up your trash. I can't prevent that.
That Joe's Hauling's gotta come to you and get a, a permit to pick it up.
But he's going to H R R A to get it registered.
He would have, but right now, before we give H R R A that permission, they have to come to you and say, I'm gonna go pick up this guy's garbage and I want a hauling permit for Roxbury. And then pretty soon he's picking up the neighbor's garbage and pretty soon we got one more hauler. I'm just wondering if it's gonna get out of hand.
Do we have an out clause?
Um, I'm trying to solve, you know, a problem that someone's trying to register and they, they have a regulatory history, you know, that has not been resolved and they are the ones that will address that and not allow the registration to go through. Regardless, regardless, if, for example, Jeremy Johnson, he's registered with H R R A, but because he is going to our transfer station, he's really, I feel bad for him because he's not hauling directly to H R R A in Danbury, but he has to register as a hauler. Because we belong to H R R A. He also has to register with the town if he's going to the town's transfer station.
Right.
But.
He's the only one that can come to our town transfer station.
Yep, yep. Those larger trucks, right? Those large companies can't go into our transfer station.
Correct, those are, I mean, I'm just, I don't know, it's probably gonna be fine. They might be more of those larger trucks on the road.
Maybe we need more time to think about this. I'm gonna run out here. I'm down to five percent, sorry. I know I plug it in, but I got one of those fans.
There's no big, is there a big rush on this?
I did, I did pass it by Gail and she said that she didn't have any problem with it.
No, I, I legally, I don't have a problem. It's, it's just, are we creating something unknown here? Losing a little control of who, who comes in and picks up trash.
Well, if we should take time, personally, I think we should do this. I think it's a no-brainer. I hear what you're saying, Jim, but this is a good deal.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a lot of, lot of bureaucracy out of our hands. And there's no reason, I hear what you're saying. You're asking good questions, but I, I think they're, they're, you know, the percentage of that kind of thing happening is, is low. And the positive of this outweighs the negative, in my opinion.
So basically, the H R R A's got total control of our trash and who picks it up and everything.
No, because those haulers had to register here, so, and it's those same people. And, um, some of them have decided not to come back to Roxbury because it just isn't enough business.
Right.
And they were not allowed in our transfer station.
And that's not, yeah, it's not gonna change.
Uh, you know, you've got somebody that's got a lot of the people and then we also have a lot of the people that go to the transfer station themselves. And, um, it, it does, it just takes, uh, it, they have the, they have the authority to, um, register them and take their registration away if they're not following.
So.
Right, we're going in circles now.
Jeremy Johnson's got to answer to H R R A, not to us.
No, he does, he, he has to register if he was, if he was bringing stuff to Danbury, which all, almost all of them do, he would, they have to register with H R R A. It doesn't matter who it is.
Right.
But if they want to come here to Roxbury and dump, they have to come to this office. But if they're just going to H R R A, uh, it's just why, why do I have to fool with it? It's just another.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna make a motion then. I'm gonna make a motion that we allow H R R A to take care of, um, permitting haulers. That's my motion.
Permitting, uh, for processing registrations for collection and hauling within the town of Roxbury. Yes.
That's it, that's my motion.
Okay.
And that's hauling to Danbury.
Right.
Not to the transfer station.
We all, because we are also involved with the transfer station, yes.
Right, so we have control over our transfer station?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Russ, you go ahead. I'm just gonna throw, well, no, I'm, I'll wait on this. I'm still on, uh, Botched Hill Culver Bridge slash, it's like we said, everybody, Cardinal says that, everybody says that one can wait. That's the only one that the water goes over the road. And people have to detour and it creates a dangerous situation. The others, the water's not going over the road.
Yeah, but they're much worse shaped, Jim.
They're gonna fall down. But the other night, at one thirty AM, we were coming down because I had to go up to the farm in the middle of the night for water issues. And I couldn't cross Botched Hill Bridge at one thirty.
Right.
I had to go around. And to me, that makes it important. Because the up, upstream, there's huge trees, which we should get out of there, big logs going right across. And that might have saved things a little bit.
So what are you saying? That we should put money into that and not into the other two culverts? We're gonna have to do all three. The only agenda was whether we take some of the COVID money and what culverts do we put it into? I don't really care. I mean, either way, we're gonna pay the other end of it.
I'm just, I want to see Botched Hill get a little further up on the priority list.
Okay, I'll add that in, for sure.
I mean, they're all, they're all equal, but this one actually floods, so people who try to go through it could be in big trouble.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
So I have a motion to adjourn. I'm gonna need a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I hope to see you on the twelfth. All right.
See you Sunday.
Is it this Sunday?
Yeah.
My God, it is. Okay, good meeting. Take care, everybody. Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. Good night.